On to number 11, Yuba Sutter Lodging Association by Mr. Darren Gale.
It's okay. Okay. So, good evening, I'm Mayor, City Council members. This evening, I'm before you to discuss the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association annuals report. But first, there's a variety of people that stood up behind me, so I wanted to introduce the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association Board. First, we have Steve Young, who's President of the YSLA Board, and he is with Givicky Hospitality, who oversees our Hampton Inn. They provide a good lion's share of the transient occupancy tax that the cities receives. And next, sitting over there, we have Jacob Young with Collins Lake. Over in Yuba County, he is actually the treasurer for the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. And then we have Lee Jones with the Harkey House, who we all know. Charles Sharp with the French Town Inn up in Yuba County, and I'm sure he'll tell you about a wine event coming up in April 23rd and 24th. And then finally, we have Michael Coogan from MC2 out of Chico, who is the contractor to provide services for the Yuba Sutter Lodging Associations that'll be talked about in a minute. Briefly, I just wanted, Steve asked me to give the presentation related to the annual report. So, brief history, two years ago, the Yuba Sutter Region established what is called a Business Improvement District, or a Tourism Improvement District, as set up in the 1994 state law for Property and Business Improvement Districts. That's mentioned in the staff report. This is the only tourism group in the entire county that spans two, inside the entire state, that includes two counties. On top of that, it also includes four cities. So, you have six jurisdictions, and through that process, each jurisdiction had to allow Yuba City to be the lead agency as relates to this project. Why was Yuba City the lead agency? Because the majority of the hotel, not the majority of numbers, but the majority of funds collected as part of any type of Business Improvement District would be generated through hotel stays in Yuba City. Now, that could change as a result of, across the river, there is a new hotel that's being built. That being stated, they are not required to pay into the Tourism Improvement District because they are a sovereign, they're part of, I don't want to say a sovereign nation, but it's on tribal land. That being said, the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association has reached out and requested that they kick in 2% of, or they charge a 2% fee on their customers, and that they provide that to the Lodging Association. On an annual basis, a annual report needs to be presented and budgeted for the lot, for any type of Business Improvement Districts. If you remember, we did that with the Downtown Business Association. Again, a little bit different, but a similar type of organization. That's what's presented before you this evening, and that's the action that's required tonight as part of the resolution. The annual report has all the things that are required in state law, and then it also has their budget. For full disclosure, I included the information in the past. The city has set aside 10% of what's currently collected in TOT for the Lodging Association. In our current budget, that's approximately $100,000 that's been set aside for the group. At this time, I can answer any questions very specifically related to the Lodging Association. If you have no questions, or if you'd like to wait until we hear from a couple of our board members, we could do that however you would like, Mayor Harris. Would you like to ask any questions related to the lodging, to the district resolution, or would you like to hear presentation from the board members?
I wouldn't mind hearing a presentation. I'm curious to see what plans are moving forward.
Great, so, okay. So, this evening, we're going to start with Lee Jones, who's going to give some background on tourism funding in the region. She'll be followed by Steve Young, the President, and then they'll invite the consultant up to give a little bit of detail about what they have planned.
Thanks, Darren, and good evening. Good to see Cindy Payne here from downtown. I've had the pleasure of operating the Bed and Breakfast since the mid-'80s, and have seen tourism just really take off in Yuba City. My friend Tony asked when I walked in, "What's tourism going on in Yuba City?" And I said, "Tony, just for starters, you know, we live in a Pacific Flyway. We have people every weekend in the spring and fall that hike the buttes. We also have festivals, Punjabi festival, various festivals during the year, and then we always have people coming for weddings, for funerals, for reunions." More importantly, because of one article in Southwest Magazine a couple of months ago, last week I housed, lodged, a family. Where? Baltimore. I have them coming from Arkansas, I have them coming from Tennessee. Yuba City, you have the nine motels and the one Bed and Breakfast, and a lot of revenue coming in. Back in the '80s, it was a 6% tax, so every quarter, I would send off 6% of what I brought in to you. Now, a few years later, it went to 10%. 10% comes to Yuba City. Now, it's 10% and another 2%, and what's exciting is that 2% can actually be dedicated to promote tourism. We've never had that kind of revenue before. Just to give you an idea on money, my small Bed and Breakfast has sent to Yuba City the taxes I brought in, over the years, over a million dollars. That's what I grossed. So, it is a real good bang for your buck, and we're ready to go. It's taken us a while, this just passed two years ago, it's in its infancy, but we have been meeting diligently, almost monthly, trying to come up with plans. It's a learning process, so we need your guidance, and we need your support to help Yuba City take off. It is a jewel, what we have to offer here. Many of my people come from, the guests come from Marin County, San Francisco. They want to get away from the city, they want to see the sun, they want to see blue skies, they want to hike the buttes, they want to have a wonderful experience in the Yuba Sutter area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name's Steve Young, I'm with the Hampton Natomus, and also the President of the YSLA. Just to add to what Lee was talking about, first of all, I have some good news. We have the creation fees that the city of Yuba City fronted for the creation of the YSTID was about $53,000. We're happy to report that we're paying that back. The check is in the mail, so a little extra money for the city. And, let's see, so I think that we share a common goal. We all are here to promote tourism. It's good for our business, it's good for other businesses in the area, gas stations, restaurants, you know, shops, government. The Hampton alone, on a yearly basis, brings in between $300,000 and $400,000 in TOT. And it's great that we have this district now, that we can use some of that money, the assessment plus a portion of the TOT, to promote the area. And, you know, we've never had that before, so thank you for your support with that. Let's see, it's been two and a half years or so since the creation of the district, and we haven't really done much. You know, the first year, we were kind of finding our way, collecting revenue because we had no money at that point. And over the last year, you know, we've made some significant strides, we've gone through growing pains. I also work with the Elk Grove TID, and it took them about three years to get going in earnest as well, so I think we're right on the verge of doing some great things. We hired MC Squared out of Chico, and they put together a new website for us, which is really sharp, should go live next month, I think. And then a bunch of short-term and long-term marketing for the area. And with that, I'd like to introduce Michael Coogan from MC Squared, and talk about some of the things that are coming up.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, councilmen, councilwomen. Like I've been introducing, Michael Coogan, I'm the managing partner with MC2, we're based out of Chico. We've been around for about 30 years, and responded to requests for proposals from the district about a year ago. We bring an extensive background in both tourism and economic development marketing. We've worked quite a bit with Audrey Taylor, who's based out of Chico, doing economic development marketing, and so as we were evaluated, we found out we were a really great fit. You know, every city, you know, every town, every region, has something that's very special and unique about it, and this place definitely does. And as my team has been here quite a bit over the last six, eight months, you know, we have really just discovered that there's so many things here that people don't know about, right? There's even things that people that live here don't really know and appreciate about. And so, that's what our job is. Our job really is to partner with the YSLA, to help communicate that message, to communicate those unique, special things that this region has to offer, to create an awareness for people that don't know, you know, the things that this place has to offer. And like they said, you know, when people come here, ultimately, the end goal for what we're doing is to get people to come and stay overnight. And when people come and stay overnight, the end result is that that brings economic well-being to the area, brings economic well-being to the lodgers, as well as to the other surrounding businesses. And people get familiar, and get connected, and want to come back and bring people. It's been our experience over the years that, and this is the case with this organization, that, you know, they're busy doing the things that they're doing, right? They don't have the time, or the team, or the expertise to consistently drive a tourism-focused marketing effort forward, you know, and to have somebody to own it. And that really is what we have done. We've created this business model to where we are their partner, which includes even hiring a person who is the tourism coordinator, coordinator, who will be boots on the ground here in this region, who will be connecting with events, and connecting with all the partners here that are connected to tourism. It's not just YSLA, it's not just the Chamber, it's the cities, it's the other organizations that are here that really need to partner together to really promote and enhance this region. And our job is to convince people, show them the great things that there are here for this region to come, and then once they're here, develop programs that help enhance their experience, right? We know that once they come here, we want them to have a great experience and want to come back again in the future. So, over the next few months, like Steve mentioned, we have the website wrapped up, we're planning a launch event for that. We have, we have great plans over the next 12 months to continue to create exposure through some very niche-focused things. As you guys know, you're in a region that has a lot of tourism competition, right? So, things that we can use to really make you guys stand out and draw attention to this area. So, we're excited to be a partner, partner with you guys, partner with this area, partner with the YSLA, to really let people know that, you know, Yuba Sutter is a special place, and it is worth the visit. And we have a little video that we have, we'd love for you guys to see.
What makes a place special? It's the local treasures. The history. It's the culture. The landscape. It can all be found here at Yuba Sutter. A place where you can play. A place where you can explore. A place where you can relax. A place where you can just be. Uncover the unknown, and escape to hidden treasures. It's worth the visit. Visit Yuba Sutter.
So, that's a little bit of the presentation this evening. I will let you know, this is the first video, one video. Also, during the time that MC2 was putting together video, we also had fires, so we didn't have blue skies, and a lot of the other things that they want to include in future videos they hope to do over time. But that was the presentation, and we can answer any questions. And I know Charles does want to talk about one event from the French Town Inn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I own French Town Inn, which is a little bed and breakfast on 100 acres up in Yuba County. And I'm part of the North Sierra Wine Trail, here's our little wine booklet, and last year, we brought in Cordy Winery, and I'm going to leave these with you, it's saved to date, April 27th and 28th for the Wine Trail. I hope you all can come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And then myself, and any of the board members I know, would love to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions?
Sure you want me to go first?
Okay. Beautiful video. My, the questions and the comments I may make, I want to make sure that I preface them by saying, I'm not opposed to tourism by any means. I've lived in this area now for 40 years. I chose to live here for various reasons. A lot of them have to do with the area itself. So, first of my questions, as staff has done a very good job of educating us about the budget needs of this city, and knowing over time that we have some fairly significant and serious things that we're going to need to address. Even this evening, we've heard a plea for some continued vigilance on the Walton and the police support. We've got homeless issues. We recently took a report from our Public Works Department about a significant deficit in our ability to pay for the roads. We have public safety needs. So, my questions are going to be centered around the budget expense, not the assessment, but the matching funds. And I notice that the city of Yuba City appears to be the only entity that's providing matching funds, so please, someone help me understand why it's only Yuba City. That's my first question.
Yes, so, that's the only jurisdiction that stepped up to the plate to get the organization established, and I know it's an issue that the board wants to take up with all the jurisdictions, asking for them to do match. But Councilmember Boomgarden, none of the other jurisdictions have done so. Additionally, as it relates to the original petitions that were signed, three of them, one of them being the Hampton Inn, the second one being Bonanza, and the third one being the Harkey House, one of the things that they mentioned in their petition was that they would consider supporting it if the council would match. There's no contractual agreement at this time between the city and the Lodging Association to make that match. It's purely based upon a request, and Mr. Young, if he wants to add anything, can add that too.
As it relates to the matching funds, I note in the presentation that $90,000 of the $100,000 that's being requested is used to be determined. Can anybody help me understand what it is we're going to be, what that $90,000 used to be determined would be going to?
So, based upon not knowing if they would receive the funds, they did not include the full amount in their budget.
Okay. And if it was, again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the council, I want to make that 100% clear, if that matching fund was reduced, or modified, eliminated, what would that do to the current work plan that you have in place?
I would say that, based upon the budget that was approved, they did not take it into consideration that they would actually receive it. Obviously, there's that hope and desire, but as a result, it would just decrease the marketing efforts by whatever dollar amount the city would be providing.
At a recent meeting, and this was before I was elected, it was explained, when we talked about hotels and motels in Yuba City, that their fill rate, they were full all the time. And so, you know, bringing more tourism obviously is good, and there's TOT, positive TOT implications to that, but at the same time, are we creating a potential problem of bringing people to an area where they can't, they can't stay?
So, this will be a good question for Mr. Young, because of when tourism stays are, and he can tell you where his occupancy is on Monday through Thursday, versus Saturday, Friday and Saturday, when you have tourism stays.
Thank you.
Yeah. Our occupancy midweek is pretty good. It's the weekends where you have the typical tourist, you know, coming to town for weddings, or, you know, just events in the area that, you know, we could use help, and I think everyone, you know, could use the help on, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday night. But Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah, we fill often.
Okay. I guess the final question is, go ahead.
Can I have one thing, Councilmember Boomgarden? Also, at the current time, we have unexpected, well, I shouldn't say unexpected, you have an increase in hotel stays as a result of multiple fires in the North State, and also the incident at Oroville Dam with contractors. So, that is another reason why the hotels are more full right now than they normally will be on a normal year.
Okay. Thank you for that. I guess the other question for, maybe you can't answer, but it does seem like it's a good question to ask, is Hard Rock's going to have something like 162 rooms, right? Understand they're a sovereign nation, understand that they may, you know, may not fold into this thing, but, and they have been approached, any indication at all about their willingness to participate?
According to Brenda Strannix, today at our board meeting, who works closely with them, she was very positive that they would be participating.
Okay. So, they could potentially help with an offset if we decided to do something different with the matching funds?
Absolutely, it would be additional revenue.
Okay. I don't have any questions at this time.
Through the mayor.
Councilmember Boomgarden, other additional revenues, we do have two hotel projects that have been approved in Yuba City that have yet to begin development, and there's a possibility of an expansion of an existing one. Anytime you would see that, it would also be an increase to the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association's revenue, and that's because those new room nights would have a much higher rate than some of your existing hotel rooms that are in the community.
Thanks. Again, the balance, at least for this councilperson, is needs that I would consider to be clearly identified through budget workshops, and the budget and goals and visions versus this as well. So, this gets thrown into the mix for me, in trying to figure out, you know, what we can and what we should fund.
Are you ready? Okay. Through the mayor. Did you have a question? The gentleman behind you?
I decided to add to what Darren was saying. With those additional hotel rooms that could be coming online, there's, you know, the additional need for, you know, more marketing too, to fill them, so, you know, keep that in mind as well.
I have some specific, more specific questions. On the approach of regional support, what work has been done to have the other areas, jurisdictions, to contribute some of the funding?
So, Brenda Strannix is going to lead that effort, and she's been speaking with them. I believe, very similar to, as the city stance has been, is we've yet to write a check for this year's $100,000 that's been set aside. The reason being was, the Lodging Association need to get organized, and need to get to a point that they had a website, that they were ready to go with their video. And the Lodging Association, as they've talked at their board meeting, was, okay, once we're up and running, then we would have the ability to show, hey, this is what they're doing, and that they could ask those other jurisdictions for funding. Where right now, they've yet to release their website, and really have that marketing plan. Again, they just signed a contract with MC2 that'll start on April 1st. They've been doing the website, they created the video, however, now they'll be running the day-to-day operations of a Lodging Association, and hiring a local staff person that, they've been working with the Chamber of Commerce, that, to pay rent in the Harkey, not the Harkey House, the Madden House, and that person would actually be located at the Chamber of Commerce building.
Okay. So, the matching funds of $100,000 is then determining where Councilmember Boomgarden was talking about, the $90,000, so really, only $10,000 of that is, at this moment, considered really budgeted? Is that how I'm to interpret this?
That is correct, however, their first quarter revenue came in higher than expected as a result of folks that are in here due to the campfire. So, we don't believe that we'll have any problem meeting that budget number that's currently before you. They want to be conservative in their number. They'd much rather have more revenue, so that they can go out and support more community events and more marketing, versus set up a program that they can't meet their revenue needs. And of course, they, on a quarterly basis, you receive, it's supposed to be on a quarterly basis, Yuba City's very prompt with writing the check. Some of the other jurisdictions, they lag in the timeframe of when they provide the quarterly assessment to the Lodging Association. So, what happens, would you like me to explain that, Councilmember? So, when a person stays in a hotel, when they're taxed, it shows on their bill a 10% transient occupancy tax, and a 2% Tourism Improvement District. On a quarterly basis, the lodging partners actually have to write that check to the local jurisdiction in which they're placed. From there, the local jurisdiction takes the TOT, goes to their general fund, so I'll speak for Yuba City. That money goes to the general fund, you receive a report from Robin on a quarterly basis. That additional 2%, the city then transfers, writes a check, and writes those funds to the Yuba Sutter Lodging Association. Yuba City has a process. Some of the other jurisdictions are still trying to figure out how that process is. We have to follow up with them at times, but we sure hope that that revenue will start coming in on a regular basis every quarter, because how can you plan accordingly for a marketing if you don't know when your revenue's coming in?
And thank you for explaining that, because on the TOT, that's a method of revenue that many cities are tapping into, that is creating some revenue that is not heavy on consumer-wise, you know, for water, sewer, and all that. It's all in the hotel system. I mean, I like the whole aspect of what we're doing and what we're creating. I don't know if the $100,000 should be completely allocated, set aside, until other jurisdictions perhaps would be willing to match, or be similar to, if it's a $10,000 match by jurisdiction, and then, you know, with a caveat to that. Because as we have said, I think we have been meeting in multiple meetings, talking about goals and priorities, and in those goals and priorities, we have a limited amount of funding, and to not support something that's going to create more funds for us, we need to be aware of that. So, there's a fine balance to do that, and I'm not sure the complete answer to it, but I don't know if I want to put $100,000 into this project without other jurisdictions contributing. That's all I got.
Through the mayor, point of clarification, the budget that was attached in the staff report indicates fiscal year 2018-2019, correct?
That should, the budget should be for 2019-20.
Okay. It's marked 2018-2019. So, my question, just for the public's knowledge here, and to go on record, according to the revenue that's identified in the budget that's in the staff report, total revenue for the Lodging Association is estimated at $365,000. Of that, Yuba City is contributing $180,000 through its 2% assessment, and then the matching funds is another $100,000. So, of the $365,000, Yuba City is contributing $280,000 of that. That seems like a disproportionate share to me, just sitting here. I do appreciate, again, the efforts going forward into tourism, because I understand it's almost sort of a chicken and an egg type of thing, but that does seem disproportionate to me.
So, Councilmember Boomgarden, just to clarify, the 2% $180,000 are funds that the Lodging Association has self-assessed themselves? And yes, Yuba City receives the majority of hotel stays in the region. There's still a $100,000 request that would be coming out of the city's general fund on top of what they're self-assessing themselves. Just to clarify, one is a self-assessment, and the other one is a discretionary act to the city council of if you'd want to allocate those funds or not.
Thanks.
Okay.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Madolo, would you like to follow up before I go?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
In the agreement, or the resolution, it clarifies the 2% assessment in there, correct?
Correct.
So, that's $180,000 that is being collected.
That's being generated by Yuba City located hotels.
Right, by the consumer, whoever pays for whatever they...
Correct.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, through the mayor. First of all, I echo some of the many same concerns that I'm hearing from the other end of the dais here. And we have been going through our goals and priorities, and we identified one of the things that we wanted to talk about is basically jump-starting this economy. But just listening tonight, I have a couple of observations, and I have a couple of questions. First of all, our occupancy is full, for the most part, due to circumstances that aren't usual, plus, most of our tourism is coming in right now based upon events that are longstanding, the Seek Festival... The Seek Festival, graduations, weddings, things of that nature. So, great video, wonderful, but can you give me an idea, talking to the gentleman from the marketing firm, you've been here six months, your team has been on the ground about six months in the area, is that correct?
Yeah, maybe a little bit longer.
What can you tell me about our area? What can you tell me that you're going to market on our area?
Yeah, so as you know, I can just be frank, Yuba City is not a destination, right? It's, it's not Monterey, it's not Carmel, you know, that, that, but there are a lot of people who live in areas where they are stuck in traffic, they're in the cities, they want to get away. They want to experience something that is more, more community, more home, you know, more, more, more relaxing. And yes, you do have big events that go on that people come, you know, we don't have to advertise the Seek Festival, right? Plenty of people come for those things, but there are opportunities within those gaps. There's the bike around the buttes, there's the rodeo, there's motocross, there's incredible fishing right outside, you know, your neighborhoods. There's lots of other things that are niche interests that people like. We don't have to compete with the beach, we don't have to compete with Tahoe, we don't have to compete with your neighbors in Sacramento, that we can, we can, we can focus on very specific kind of niche experiences for people to come and experience what that video shows, right? And, and as we surveyed the community here, what we heard on a regular basis was, there's nothing worth doing here, you know, and, and people don't know that there's stuff to do here, and that's not true, right? It's a misconception. And so part of our job is, not only is our audience, people that are unaware of this area, but our audience is also the people that are here, because they're your greatest ambassadors for this area when people show up, right? So one of the things, part of our plan is to basically create an ambassador program, to try to develop an ambassador program where we're training business owners, we're training the chamber, we're training people here so when people come and visit this area, that they know how to communicate the values and the qualities of coming and experiencing this area, right? So one of the ideas that we have is that, you know, this is, and some of this stuff is going to be seasonal and it's going to be trendy. You talked about weddings, right, and that, and that is a way that people come into the area, but that actually is an opportunity, because, you know, lots of brides want to have a rustic farm wedding, right? But they can't have a rustic farm, farm wedding in San Francisco, right? But they want a place that they can go, and that's a very targeted market. But when we target an event like that, if we can get a couple dozen brides to decide that many of the venues in this area are the place to have their, have their wedding, they don't just come by themselves with their spouse and the officiant, they come with a whole crew of people that stay. Stay for two days, three days, they come on the weekends, the time when, when the, the rooms need to be filled. It is a challenge, because, you know, there isn't the Grand Canyon here, there isn't the things that people are going to naturally draw to. But you guys, the people here, the connections that you guys have, that community, the things, the cultural diversity that this area has is unprecedented, really. I mean, it's just, you, we tried to show it in that video, and I don't know if we even did it justice, the op, the, the experience that you could have here, you have rich history, you have museums, you have a lot of things. You're in the middle of the Pacific Flyaway, for goodness sakes, you know, there's lots of opportunities to be able to attract people. We don't have one big home run, but we're going to have a lot of opportunities for base hits to be able to attract people to this area.
Okay, yeah, and you're right, we don't have the Grand Canyon, but we have some pretty big potholes, I guarantee that. Kind of expanding off of that. Yeah, expanding, I got one more, you know, how are you going to market this? What is our, our means? I've been through, you know, the report you submitted, it talked about, it called it docents, you know, talking about, you know, getting the locals involved, about the history, you know, great video, I love the video. But explain to me kind of what the method is that you're going, how are you going to reach the people?
Yeah, so most, most of what we're going to do is through digital means. We're gonna, we have some really great writers, and we're going to write some articles about the area. As you guys have seen from the recent Southwest article, you know, that, a well-written article that features, you know, some of the uniqueness of this area grabs a lot of attention. And so part of our plan is to, is to leverage some media exposure, to be able to write some articles, to leverage some of the things that are going on around here, right? Some might not come for the Seek Festival, but there's history and things around that that can draw people here. A lot of digital marketing, a lot of social media. You saw one first early video, but we plan to build videos around very specific demand drivers, the, the outdoors, the, the culture, you know, the history, the things of this age, this, this area, that we'll be able to insult, and with digital marketing, be able to target very specifically to people's interests. For example, marketing on Facebook, we know exactly what you like, what, what's your interest groups. We can target people very, very specifically, and in very, very specific geographical regions as well. So we've identified that there's pretty much, you know, about eight million people that are within proximity. Obviously, a lot of people are competing for their attention, but to be able to target some specific kinds of ideas to specific groups.
Okay. I think you guys are on the right track for a long term, because I'm one of those people that takes a lot of airplane rides and read the magazines and find out about all kinds of places to go that I've never been. But at the same time, I do think that we are in our infancy stage of this. And the city, as we went through our goals and priorities, we got to really figure out what our future is going to be and a part of this. And we talked about the Milken Institute said tourism. But one of the biggest assets we have here is the rivers, but the problem with the rivers is they're overrun with homeless. So we've got a lot of things, I think, that the city and the county is going to need to fix that coincides with the marketing of the, of the TID. And I, I'm all for supporting, but I do have my reservations, and I would almost, again, the 100,000 and no one else contributing bothers me. I realize that the 2% that's being charged is, that's based upon the revenues that comes in from the establishments. That's, that's non-negotiable. But, you know, Yuba County, Marysville, Sutter County, everyone else needs to be on board with this because we are a region. One thing I think that's kind of staring us in the face is, I'm not a proponent of releasing the 100,000 at this point, and I'm just speaking for myself, but we have a check in the mail to us for 53,000 that's not in the funds right now. That may not be a bad idea to release that back to them in good faith, because it's not part of our budget right now. It's not part of what we're anticipating come in, so it's kind of a net in, net out. It would help possibly them along in their future, but cause us no harm as we're solving things here, because in the next two months, we're going to be addressing public safety, growing the economy, the infrastructure, everything we talked about, our goals and priorities. And I'm just real hesitant on releasing an extra 100,000 out of the general fund. So I just offer up the returning of the 53 as, as good faith as a possibility.
Would that be a motion then, sir? You want to say something? All right, go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank all you folks for everything that you're doing for our community. You guys have done great things in a short period of time. The Harkey House is wonderful. I stayed in it 10 years ago. It was, I should go back again, I'm sorry, but it was just a Friday night thing, went there. Oh, I stepped on myself, I'm sorry. But I mean, just a wonderful, you know, bed and breakfast, middle of Yuba City, it was wonderful. Anyway, I just want to say you guys doing great things. I guess the bottom line is, is we need a little extra help. I guess you guys are going to probably have to hit up the other jurisdictions for some help with you also. But I'm all for you guys, you're doing wonderful things, and I look forward for the great things for you folks in the future.
Through the mayor.
Someone just said through the mayor.
I'm sorry, that would be me, Mr. Mayor, before, it looks like the council's getting ready to move forward. Before we do, just a reminder, it looks like you're getting ready to go out to the public.
Right.
But before we do that, I just wanted to bring up one point. Because this is a business improvement district, there's actually certain restrictions under state law under the council's ability to modify the reports. So currently, what you have is a report before you that's a proposal. Council has authority this evening to give a thumbs up, say, yes, we generally accept this report, and we approve it, and we're bringing it forward. It doesn't mean that you necessarily have to commit budget amounts in the future. However, if you want to modify the report this evening and change something, there's a special process you have to go through, including publications in the newspaper, holding a public hearing, making sure that public hearing occurs within 90 days after, you know, after the notice has been given. And so it's a little bit more complicated. So my suggestion is, think about that as we have public comment tonight, and if you're inclined to do modifications to it, let us know what those modifications are so that we can go through that process, assess that process, and then bring it back to you once we've complied with the requirements of state law.
All right, so what you're saying, sir, and short of fully approving or fully denying, we have a process we have to go through?
Well, generally.
Not denying, but not approving.
Yes, generally, you, it's, the reports are submitted, you may approve them, but if you want to modify them, there's, there's distinctions that have to be made in steps that go forward. So, and usually these are pro forma reports. In other words, they're sort of reports, you get an update every so often, here's what it's going, you have a contractual obligation to do X, Y, and Z. I understand there's not a contract in this particular case, but they're usually preset. In other words, you're locked in, and this happens to be one of those circumstances. It doesn't appear that we're as locked in as perhaps other jurisdictions would be to this. So it does provide the council flexibility, but there's a process for going through that. And I think Mr. Gale has something to add.
I would just say that as relates to the $100,000 funding, approving the resolution this evening would not commit the city council to providing $100,000 for the project. Is that correct, Mr. Chafin?
That's my understanding. In other words, that you're just accepting kind of the report and approving a preliminary budget for moving forward. However, that being said, if you wanted to modify that budget or any line item in that budget, we're kind of in a unique circumstance here, because there perhaps in the past should have been some steps taken that aren't or were not taken, and as a result, we're kind of in a little bit of a gray area. So you could either give the thumbs up this evening if you were inclined to move forward, and then just not budget the amounts if you wanted to change that in your budget coming in the upcoming year. But recognize that if you are going to modify something, there is a process for that. And if you're not inclined to do the full thing, my suggestion would be completely, try to be, follow the process as much as possible. And I'm sorry to talk so much, but this is kind of a complicated gray area as to what changes you can make because of the state law.
Once we get to a decision, I'm going to ask you how to do it properly.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because I want to make sure we do it right. Did you have something to say, sir?
I do, I, I think it's a follow-up question to the city attorney. We are about to engage in a budget review and approval process. This appears to be, to be a budget request. It seems to me that this should come to the council in concert with the other budget requests that we're going to get for general fund expenditure. How does that match with what you just told us?
There, there are a couple of components here. One is, under state law, the, the Business Improvement District is required to do an annual report, I believe in the first quarter. Obviously, that doesn't sync up with the city's budget portion of that. The annual report has certain items that are in it. And one of those items, I believe, let me check here really quickly, is not only any changes that you have, but the estimated costs of providing the improvements, maintenance, and activities for that fiscal year. What they're providing is an estimated cost of moving forward, at least my read of that is. So you can accept the report, and you may accept the report, but if you want to change anything specific in there, there is a modification process you have to go through. Was that clear enough?
I, I think it's clear enough, but it, it's not specific enough for us to be able to say, come back with, with some other work in regards to reaching out to the other jurisdictions and, you know, to follow up with Councilman Shaw's. You know, we, we have some interest in perhaps allocating the 53,000, but we're looking for some help from the other jurisdictions.
And first of all, I don't want to point the state legislature, but it would have been helpful if they provided more clarity in these circumstances. There may be another option, and that option is to continue the item. And if you continue it to a date certain in the future with certain direction, saying, hey, here's what we'd like to, to see, it could be that the BID would reach out and be able to come back in, say, three or four weeks with an update with regards to their outreach efforts or whatever that time may be, a reasonable time. That would also allow for any modifications that you may have or how to propose that. There's nothing to stop them from submitting an amended report.
Thank you. All right, I can remember all the questions I just had.
Sorry.
No, that's not you, it's, it's this. First of all, I've never stayed at the Harkey House, but I have, but I have gone to the garden tour, and I know the facility is wonderful, and it'd be the top of my list if I was going to come to Yuba City for sure. Right next to Hampton Inn, I tell you, and I'm not kidding. When I go on vacation, that's the first thing I do is go to their website, because it's a, it's a great facility. So I appreciate all the participation and the work that has gone into this. The video is awesome. I know you folks have put together here in the report several line items of, of plan in place, and I think that's great, we, you got to have that. But I also, in, in agreement with my, my colleagues here, I see $90,000 that's on, no plan for it. We're asked to provide $100,000. And so you have to be pragmatic and reasonable here. We are faced with a pretty stiff budget problem coming up. I like the idea Councilmember Shaw has with the 50 grand coming back as a gesture. I also have a concern as well with other jurisdictions not putting up, because they're going to benefit just like we are when, when folks come here. Do we have a plan, or has there been any presentation similar to this one to the other jurisdictions? Or they, have you received a no, or as good as we're going to get, as Brenda says, it looks good?
Yeah, so a, a couple of things. One, I think you see that the Yuba Center Lodging Association did not assume that they would receive funding.
Right.
So that, so that was an assumption based upon that that's, this is an action of the city council, and that's why you don't see anything set aside for those funds. As relates to an assumption, you're receiving, you're the first one to see this video, as is the public. And the goal of the Lodging Association is to go to each one of the jurisdictions and provide them with an overview of, of what's occurred today.
All right, thank you.
And other than that, there's been no discussion between the board members and the local jurisdictions. Brenda Strannix is on the board, and she was the one kind of leading that effort.
And so we still have some hope. Once we make some presentations over there, they might see the light.
So I guess that for directions back to their board, if, if they came back and said, hey, they're dedicating 10%, it doesn't change the budget realities that many of the council members have brought up. So maybe if you provide some, so that they understand if, if they did do that effort and they got it, would there be the assumption that the council would be willing to?
I know, I know the concept of contributing $100,000 would have a much softer landing in our minds if we knew we weren't on an island contributing 100 grand to something. But in principle, I definitely am 1,000% for it, but we also have the numbers to deal with and the responsibility for the bigger picture. And again, I'll reiterate, the having it, putting it right back is, I think it's a great idea. This just handed to me. But I don't.
So I think in the resolution, one of the things it states is that there's two, it just talks about how there's a 2% assessments and the boundaries, and none of those are changing, and that's what's actually in the Transit Improvement District Plan. So there's actually a plan, is one of the things, as Mr. Chafin was speaking about, there's actually a tourism, Yuba Center Tourism Improvement District Plan. And if you were to amend that plan, you have to go through a, a 90-day process. It would not change your resolution, it would not change, well, it would change resolution, because you would say what the change is. Nothing that's been discussed tonight would require you to go back to change your transit, sorry, your tourism. I said transit, Tourism Improvement District Plan.
All right, sir.
Just a couple of questions through the mayor here. With just taking everything at the surface tonight, because you haven't budgeted in the 100,000, because it's in undesignated expenses, would that hinder your progress going forward for the next three or four months since you do not have expenditures associated with income that's not received?
Well, I mean, it would hinder, sure. To the extent, what extent, I, I'm not sure. We're planning to do some pretty big, you know, pushes with the initial launch of the website and initial marketing. So there's going to be a lot of funds that are tied up in the next three to four months. It'd probably be, you know, beyond that, that we would see that, that need for, for the additional funds and the continued marketing effort.
Okay, so, Mr. Chafin, if we, I guess, accepted this resolution tonight just as it is, because we're not tied to the 100,000, period, but as a follow-up, asked for follow-up to come back to us after we finished or during our budgetary process in May-June timeframe. in May-June timeframe, give them an opportunity to reach out to the other jurisdictions to see if there's any synergies, because we're a region. When I moved here thirty years ago, it used to be called the Hub Area, and we've gotten to where we're a lot of little islands. So if we could get everyone on board over the next few months, I think that would really help us with some of our decisions. Is that something that's doable very easily tonight, except one thing, we're not on the hook for the full hundred thousand, but then we can revisit this with what we're actually going to free up in May-June as we do our budget?
That's an innovative approach, and we're certainly into new ground doing that. My gut, which is often not right, my gut is, is that if we do approve it and the hundred thousand dollars is not included in it, but I think that it is.
It is.
You know, it's approved in there, but there's nothing to stop them from coming back with an updated proposed budget, or an updated or revised report, that could also be approved. The problem we're having, Councilmember Shaw, is we don't have an agreement in place. If we had an agreement in place, this would be a very simple answer, either yes or no, period. But there's no agreement in place, and there's no mechanism, so we've kind of gone outside of the process of the way it's normally been set up, and so we're forging new ground here. So if you were to approve this this evening, based on what I've seen here, there is a budgetary anticipation of that hundred thousand dollars. So unless it was very clear that, you know, that's just a preliminary budget, and you're not actually authorizing it because it hasn't been set yet, and are directing them to come back with an updated report at a future date, once we get a little bit more close to the actual budget cycle where we're setting those amounts, I think that we would at least have some arguments for moving forward.
Let me think outside of the box one more time, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Would it hurt anything, being they've already indicated no hindrance for the next few months, because they've already got the other allocations, to table this until May and bring it back then, and give them time to actually approach the others, so there's no decision, but we table it to times certain till the mid-May, early June, to give us time to go through a budgetary process, because what I'm hearing is a sense of, we're behind you guys, and you guys, we want to help, but we're trying to figure out the big puzzle here, which is our community and our region, and it gives you guys time to get out and drum up support from the other agencies as we're going through the budget, knowing that we want to help, but we just don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. Is that something that would be easily done, table it till-
Yes.
-the first meeting of June?
Yes, you could continue it to the, like, first or second meeting in June, direct them to come back with an updated report at that time, as may be appropriate, including outreach efforts to other jurisdictions, and then consider it then.
Very good, and you have something?
I do. Indulge me, Mr. City Attorney, on the fourth whereas in the proposed resolution, and I should have caught this earlier, so I apologize. If you read that paragraph there, it says it outlines the activities of the district proposed for 2018, I believe that should probably read 2019, and it also refers to a budget, which I think also would imply to me that we were approving, at least conceptually, the budget that was attached to the staff report, which is also, I think, needs to be adjusted to reflect, it's a 2019-2020 fiscal year budget.
And that would typically be the process if we'd had a contract in place, for example, is typically done for these business improvement districts. We don't have that here, but this is, but you're absolutely right, it needs to be 2019, and maybe the approach is, as Councilmember Shaw suggested, to split the baby and move forward that way.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion, if you would entertain one?
I will, one second.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify to y'all, first of all, thanks again for your work, and we are doing our best to get to yes here. I hope you understand that, we are in favor, we want to be a part of it, you do some good work, and I think the bang for the buck is outlined by Ms. Jones, especially, you know, all of you, really, but the hundred thousand dollar investment, properly invested into attracting people, will come back at us many times over, it's just kind of hard to quantify that. And when we're staring down the barrel of a significant budget challenge, it's kind of hard to part with a hundred thousand dollars. But we want to help, we want to be a part of it, and I think the motion I'm about to hear is in line with that, it's just not maybe the ideal answer you wanted to hear tonight, but that being said-
Mr. Mayor-
Here we go, I mean, public comment, don't we?
Thank you very much.
Can we have public comment? Nope?
Nope.
Yes. Semi-public comment. Collins Lake.
Yes, sir, yeah, thank you, Mayor Harrison, council members. I came more on the public side than, I am the vice president and treasurer of the YSLA, so it's, like you said, quasi, a little bit of both. But I wanted to address, one of you, every single one of you has expressed jurisdictional concerns about the other jurisdictions not being a part of it, and I know Brendan Stranix has been the one, the liaison from the board, reaching out to them. I have talked to Randy Fletcher, the fifth district of Yuba County, and I know, I think all the other jurisdictions have the same concern, where you have the three biggest lodgers being here in Yuba City, and they all come here, their concern is if they give funds, that it's all going to be for Yuba City efforts, not regional efforts, even though the YSLA is given the task for regional tourism. Their fear is that if they give their general funds, because they have the same concern as potholes, security, everything else that any jurisdiction would have, and so I know their concern is if they give into this effort, that the lion's share is going to go to the city of Yuba City and not to the region, so I think that's why there's a little bit of hesitancy on their end. But when we see this video and other tourism efforts go into effect, where they actually get the benefit of it, I think they'll be a lot more receptive to jumping into this regional effort, once they've seen that they do get the benefit of that. So I just wanted to provide that from the experience I've had connecting with them, because I'm trying to get them involved in this regional effort, and that's the pushback I've received, is like, why would we give money if it's all going to go to Yuba City? So I just want to throw that, that's the feedback I've gotten from some of the other players in the game as well. The other part, and with the hundred thousand dollars, it's a big bite to hit, our hands are tied to tourism, and your hands are tied to the public, you know, wanting to serve your constituents here. If we can find a marriage between the two, we can approve projects that help your efforts at the same time as our efforts, like I know you mentioned homelessness in the river bottoms, if there's a project that can be approved, where it made you feel good about helping your constituents, and it helped us promote tourism, we might be able to work together to make those funds, I know we're dealing with a little bit of, what do we do? So I just want to have a voice that, I know, we're a hundred percent supportive of making our area, you know, a bigger attraction, and that can only happen with these efforts as well. So if the city council came to us saying, we would love for this money to be spent this way, as long as it meant tourism efforts, I know we would be a hundred percent on board with that too, so I just wanted to voice that to you as well.
Very good, well, thank you very much for that comment, it's well-stated. One thing that I was going to add is that the concerns you hear across the river, I totally understand what they're saying, that's understandable, we have the three biggest hotels over here, and I don't think we're necessarily looking for a matching a hundred grand, but maybe something proportionate, at least something as a gesture of goodwill to demonstrate the partnership. Yes, ma'am?
From 2003, for about easily a decade and more, I was on the Chamber of Commerce, and every year, we went to each of the four jurisdictions, asking for the same amount of money, which totaled to forty-four thousand to support tourism. Yuba City has nine hotels. Sutter County has one, and getting those various government agencies, certainly, Yuba County was very supportive, Marysville would give whatever they could, but they always thought the big bucks are over here in Yuba City, and they're right. Today, when the reporter called for an appeal to talk about this issue, he was amazed, I send people over to shop on D Street in Marysville and have lunch in Marysville, and I said, tourism is a regional thing, but I have a ten-year history of working with four jurisdictions, we can do that, if you'd like to see us do that, that's not, we can do that. But keep in mind where the hotels are and where that money's coming in, you guys are the big bucks. And I appreciate your consideration for potholes, Ben Moody and I have worked collaborative with potholes on C Street, and the chief of police happened to have an officer, when one of my guests on the front porch of the Harkey House at one in the afternoon, had a nude homeless gentleman walking by. I was out running errands and missed the whole thing, but there was, but the police officer disengaged and had him realize he needed to pull his pants up.
Didn't do it.
So it all, it's, think of it as a fabric, and security, and potholes, and tourism, and restaurants, and all those businesses, it's all woven together in a fabric for Yuba City, in the regional area, thank you.
You know, and forgive me, that's the second time I've done this, but-
Hold on.
I think what we might be thinking of is, like was mentioned before, and you just said, regional. So we are not just thinking hotels, we're thinking everything, attracting people, so this is one cog in a big wheel. And so to dedicate a hundred grand, we maybe could divide it up to other similarly gold issues, or projects, that might be something to think about as well. But, you know, we have interest in the so-called heads and beds, however, we want restaurants, and we want everything else to, as well, which does come with it, however, we're looking at a little bit bigger picture, again, we do support it, but go ahead, sir.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
For Councilmember Shaw does recommendation, quick question for you, this big publicity you're doing, we're putting this on hold for two months, almost three, do you folks have enough money for this publicity to hold you over till we make this decision?
They didn't even let you.
Okay, it's all yours.
All right, before I make my motion, message heard loud and clear, and I say, show them the video, because when I looked at the video, more of the places in that video were not in Yuba City, and it's going to be the guided tours for the fishing, for the wine tours, and I hope to get to go to that, I hang out in Napa Valley enough, and it's the regional thing. Remember, thirty years ago, we used to be called the Hub Area. So with that said, Mr. Mayor, I move that we table this item to our June 4th council meeting. At that time, I would like them to bring us back a report on efforts from the other jurisdictions, and possibly a revised, updated budget with how they would spend and allocate the other expenses that are just clearly identified as just other expenses.
Second?
Well, so we have a first and second to table the item until the first meeting in June, June 4th, with a presentation hopefully by the Lodging Association to include outreach efforts in another, perhaps a modified budget, correct? All right, first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? None, thank you very much. Thank you all again for very much for your presentations today and your effort.